Good evening. Please join me standing for the invocation to be given by Mayor Fortun Allen.
That's right. Father, we thank you for the night and the opportunity to be here to serve our town, to serve the state, the country, Father, as you'll be with us, as you'll guide us, as you'll be with the citizens of this great community, this great state of Texas in our United States, and you'll just cover them with your grace and mercy. Father, we thank you for all that you've given to us, all the blessings and the grace and mercy, and we pray.
Amen. Please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good evening, and time is 7:01. Let me forward the regular town council meeting for Monday, October 25. All seven council members are present, and we have a call, and the time is 7:01, and the meeting is in session. First item is announcement, pursuant to Texas government court section 5515, council, our staff may make announcements. So this is the time for announcement. Let me start off by organizing a police department. Mr. Clark, I attended a meeting, met with the foster students of the Sunnyvale Elementary School this past Friday at the cafeteria. So the topic was about people of authorities, something like that. Anyway, we talked, and Chief Hawkes and Lieutenant Murbers and many of their officers came, both ASROs came. They talked with the kids, and the kids were so excited to see them. It's just a beauty to see how the children were connected with both the ASROs. They felt very comfortable, came and talked to them, and I also want kudos to the school. They recognized and sent many, many goodies, and they cured coffee machine and coffee and tips and a bunch of other stuff in recognition of the various offices. I just want to thank you to Mr. Clark, chief, and all the officers who came from there. Council announcements. Mr. Clark?
I want to announce on tomorrow, on October 26th and October 27th, Wednesday, so tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're going to have a town's kind of open meeting here. It's going to be for the parks. It's going to be a Parks Public Input Meeting. It's going to be from 5:30 to 7:30 on both days. And basically, we would love to have citizens, residents of Sunnyvale come stop by, and basically, they can give some input onto the current developments in the parklands. So again, swing by tomorrow or Wednesday between 5:30 and 7:30, and you can share your thoughts on the different park ideas. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Staff, do you have any announcements? Mr. Scotty?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder, Friday night at 6:00 PM at the high school is the Chamber of Commerce's Chunk or Treat event, so that should be a lot of fun. Town police, fire, and other staff will be there to help participate. And then the other thing is just a reminder that the Turkey Trot registration is open, so if you're interested in participating in the Turkey Trot, which is Thanksgiving morning, be sure and go online and register for that. We've been sending out the link to register every week in our Friday newsletter, so that's it. Thank you so much.
Do you know how many people are already there?
You know, Erica's not here today, and she's handling that, but I get CC'd on them, and I'm getting a steady stream of them coming in. I don't have a count. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, next item is public forum. This is the time members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council on any matters other than personally or legal matters or items on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Nobody's coming forward from the chamber. Is that Joseph?
Yeah, there's just.
Hands raised.
Your hands raised, right on the post, the public forum. Moving on to the consent agenda items, we have one item on the consent agenda. Item number one, consider approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the town council for October 11, 2021. Council, would you like to move this item to the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda item one? Motion to approve consent agenda item one. Motion made by Mr. Freeman. Second by Mr. Clark to approve consent agenda one. All families signify. All opposed, motion passed. Moving on to the discussion at night, the portion of the agenda. Item number two, present and discuss the findings of the downtown Sunnyvale visioning process. Mr. Goff, please.
Good evening, Mayor Council. As you're aware, for actually longer than a year, the town has been working with an advisory committee to come up with a vision for the downtown area. Last year, we brought on Rick Adamsky with Ashline to help facilitate that process. And over the course of the year, we held several public input sessions to help kind of draft divisions and goals and talk through some of the pros and cons of a downtown. And so tonight, Rick's here to give a presentation to kind of summarize that process and walk through the findings and the outcome of that process. And if the council is amenable to the outcome, then the next step would be for staff to bring back a comprehensive plan amendment that memorializes some of the information from the vision and the goals. And then Rick has some other recommendations that we might want to consider as well. So I'll hand it over to Rick to get started with the presentation in which you have any questions.
So Charles, just one second. So Charles, what staff proposed bring back is amendments to the comprehensive plan for the downtown overlay?
Correct. Right, so the way this works is, again, we've developed a vision and some goals for the downtown area. In order to memorialize those and give those some weight, we would amend the comprehensive plan to include those as goals for any future development of the downtown area. That would guide any zoning decisions or actions that the town would take in accordance with creating a downtown development.
So foster is the comprehensive plan. That's the next step.
Correct.
Subsequent to that?
Subsequent to that, we'd work with a developer or potential developers and also possibly consider some zoning changes as well to change the regulations, maybe for different uses or different development standards, just to create a more downtown-like environment. Typically, in downtowns, you'll have a little bit smaller setbacks, things like that. So things that, those are kind of things that we would consider.
Would that happen first before the businesses come, or the businesses, or the development, it's called generally developments come, right?
Sure.
Then you make the zoning changes. How it's a process?
So it can happen either way. Some communities like to go ahead and get the zoning in place, and that may make the property more appealing to developers because the zoning is already there. Other communities and developers like to come in and have some say in the zoning. So I think that's something that we'd have to look into a little bit further, decide which path we want to take. There's pros and cons to both approaches.
Understood. Thanks, Rick, please.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for having me.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to bring up the presentation. Okay, can we hear you?
Yes, sir.
Hi, everybody, above the microphone. All right, and?
One second, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Go back to the first slide.
Here we go, is that me? Yeah, that's me. Okay, wonderful. Okay, well, everybody, thank you so much for having me here. I've got a good amount of slides, but I'll try to go through them fairly quickly, and we'll go back to any of you have any type of questions. So kind of wanted to give an overview of the conversations we've been having, not only over the last year, but over the last, I don't know, maybe two and a half, three years, as we first talked to Kevin. I believe it was the first conversation we had had.
Before this time, did you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Rick Adamsky, and it's 701 Elspeth Street in Dallas. Wonderful. Okay, so we've, as we all know here, Sunnyvale has had a goal consistently, creating a walkable, pedestrian-friendly town center. It was in the comprehensive plan of 2017. I know it was a conversation before that, and so there was a lot of support for it, not everybody, but a whole lot of people supported it. But there were certain questions, and stakeholders had certain concerns and priorities. Some of the biggest things we've heard is adding to motor traffic in this area, adding to the school burden, compromising the rural characteristics of the community. A lot of people wondered, can we have a rural community or a small-town community and still have a downtown? There's a lot of challenges in creating a downtown from scratch that are kind of special, but are also opportunities, and a need to, some needs that are not met locally. Especially, a lot of people are telling us it's harder and harder to travel to neighboring communities, so we want to have opportunities to have more of that here. And that was a little bit of the background. Those are some things that we've heard over the last few years, as I said, talking to the town. Which one am I supposed to? Oh, here we go. All right, cool. So based on those conversations and based on kind of consensus that we have with the town, we said, before any type of real meaningful plan is put into place, let's really hammer out, have a real deep discussion with some of these stakeholders, and have what can be difficult questions. So understanding kind of what is the demand, the enthusiasm for the project, understand the issues involving public sentiment, trying to have a realistic discussion about trade-offs and scenarios, and define the vision and objectives. So questions, as I asked before, can you have a downtown and still maintain the rural, small-town character that people love? Should there be residential? If so, what should it look like? That was a big question that was asked. What changes are and are you willing to make? What happens if you do nothing and let the status quo happen? What's the common vision? And really, as we found that the status quo, what's currently there is not going to lead to community goals or to a consensus. So what we did was, we had three open houses. We'd had this conversation before COVID-19 started, but by the time we had the contract, COVID-19 was a major factor, so we had to say, how can we engage as many people as possible while still being sensitive to the conditions of the virus? So we had three open houses. I think everybody here was at at least one, if not all three. Tried to have those stations so that we could have social distancing, but we also worked to engage people online. So we had online surveys, we had in-person. As you'll see, we had, you know, 138, 77, 117 people who responded via the online survey. We had fewer in-person, but as we could, the best we could figure out, there wasn't overlap, so we think it was mostly different people. And then, of course, we had committee meetings to follow up. So the first open house, we asked people about their goals for the city, what some things they wanted to do, activities or amenities. We tried not to get too much into kind of the technical details on this first visit, but who do you want to see here? What do you want to see here? What are some of the things you already love about this community? And what are some of the things that you wish were here? Were kind of the closest that we came to, to maybe a technical question, was what building styles would be appropriate? And then we got, we were able to get a lot of goals. We figured out the requests, dining, a lot of people wanted more upscale dining, but dining was a big consensus. Boutique, shopping, outdoor areas that people could enjoy things, community events, people wanted this to be a place where you could see and be seen for the community. People talked about evening activities, not necessarily nightlife in the sense of bars that were open super late or clubbing, but somewhere to go at night where you could enjoy yourself, maybe have a glass of wine, maybe go see some type of event, but that could be kid-friendly as well, were all kind of big things that came out that people wanted. We talked a lot about residential styles. There were a lot of people who said no residential. There were a lot of people who said if there's residential, it should be large lots. There were some people who said that they wanted senior. One of the things that we said is, as we go forward, this is something that really needs to be hammered out, because if there's only going to be single-family residential, for example, it's not very consistent with what is normally associated with the downtown, and it's also going to be much harder to make the numbers work. So we came in not with, to push it in one direction or the other, but let's have an honest conversation about the trade-offs and the challenges that there are going to be if this is the consensus that the city comes to.
Can you fix it?
No, sir.
Okay.
So I just, I wanted you to be aware, so that just given the subject matter, legally we're fine, but I just wanted you to be aware.
So we are recording it, though?
We're recording.
Are we recording?
We're recording.
Video recording?
They can see that, they just can't hear them.
So I'll be recording the video, people can be watching?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry, we only have a public video feed, and that's what we're talking about. For context for you, sorry.
So the audio, the live audio and video aren't working, but?
But I'm recording. And they can see this.
The audio is being recorded separately, and we can upload.
Let me say broadcast to the public right now, is that correct?
Just the slide.
Just the slide.
Yes.
Look at this, we can't hear the comments.
Yes, but after this, we can upload the audio to YouTube, and they can listen to it with the scope.
I'm recording the video, so it's no video recording.
No video, just audio.
Okay.
Just the slides.
Okay, thanks.
So some people said live-work units. If anyone's not familiar with that, it's, you know, basically where someone might have some type of storefront or gallery, and they work upstairs, or they live upstairs or in the back of the building or something like that. There were a good amount of people who said that. There were also a good amount of people who said if there's residential, we'd like it to be essentially single-family homes on a large lot. We had certain kind of target residents, and it was a little bit all over the board. A lot of people just said locals. Some people said young professionals. Some people said established adults. Kind of not a huge amount of consistency on that. A certain amount of people said retirees. They were asked, who should the visitors be? Young families was a big one, just generally locals. A lot of people wanted this to be a place that was for locals first. And then young adults, professionals, and so forth were also big areas for targets. And then we have, you know, just different styles that came out. There is a report that shows, you can actually see it visually, so you can kind of compare the different things that people had said. But you see a couple examples. We have the shopping and entertainment. There's the example that we took from Green, as well as a green square type of thing. So kind of what you might call more traditional downtown styles that you have. Main Street, Main Plaza, again, traditional downtown styles, that there can be ways to do this in kind of what we might call a greenfield context. Second open house, not as well-attended, but still not bad attendance, all things considered, especially during a pandemic, 77 online and 17 in-person is not too bad. We tried to have, really let's hammer up what the vision and goals are. We were pleasantly surprised. This is the part of the process where we had an extraordinary amount of consensus on the overall vision, as well as the specific goals. Almost everybody was on the same page. We see this downtown Sunnyvale will be an authentic reflection of the town that is a unique space for connecting with the community, will become a vibrant center of the town that serves this people of all stages of life while balancing economic vitality with Sunnyvale's small-town character. Most people, as you see, were satisfied or very satisfied with that. Very few who were dissatisfied or unsatisfied. We had similar consensus around the goals, which again is in the report. We started to ask questions about trade-offs, because in some cases, we saw things where people wanted things that might be hard to make both of them happen. So we said, okay, which one do you feel more strongly about? So for example, do you want to have more open space, which may mean fewer eyes, less activity, less vibrancy? Depending on what the space is, you can have very vibrant community gathering spaces, of course. Or do you want it to be more development, more eyes and activity? When we asked the question that way, people tended to say more development, virtually, but they tended to say more open space in person. I should note, by the way, just as an aside, that those of you who went and to the open houses saw that people would be putting stickers on particular things, so it may be that people followed whether the people did. That's possible, that that may have happened in person. So do you, you know, we want to have a neighborhood feel, so that means it's probably going to be mostly residential. Or do you want to have a destination feel, which means it's going to be more commercial and more visitors? And some people said mostly residential. And then, again, mostly evening activities, because a lot of people wanted dining or entertainment, or do you want mostly daytime activities? In-person, they overwhelmingly said evening activities, dining and entertainment versus having offices or something like that. This was kind of interesting, because a lot of people said they preferred large homes, you know, maybe on big lots, but they also did not want to overwhelm the school system. So we said, okay, which of these trade-offs is more important to you? People tended to say, let's do the large homes, even if that may be, you know, even if that may lead to more people in the school system rather than smaller homes or, you know, perhaps other forms of housing which may attract adults without kids. And then same as, you know, community amenity versus economic driver. You know, is this really primarily about serving the community itself versus is this about getting in development and adding to the tax base of the community? Were the other types of questions that we had. And, you know, we found a lot of times, when going through public processes, these hard questions aren't necessarily always asked, or aren't typically asked. So we tried to say, you know, I know that we want to have everything, what do we feel most strongly about? The location, there was a lot of consensus around the location that's been discussed this whole time, you know, across the street here, the downtown development, as well as what we might call some complementary development. So it may be that you have this downtown core where it's really the most walkable, it's really has kind of the most activity, but you may have something complementary that may be, may feed into the downtown and support the downtown, but not be quite as Okay, so the third open house. So one of the biggest things that we came up with after the second one is that we said, okay, a lot of people feel, I don't want this, I don't want that. Do you feel strongly about this, that if it can't work, that you prefer not to have a downtown? In other words, you know, as we discussed, it's going to be much more challenging to have a successful downtown if, you know, you only, you don't have any residential or if it's only large lot residential. So we kind of said, okay, how strongly do you feel about that? And if not, if there has to be a little increase in taxes perhaps, if there has to be a decrease in the quality that you're expecting, what is it that you may be willing to trade off? And what is it that you're just going to draw a line and say, I prefer not to do that? We don't want to have something where if the citizens aren't going to support this, then, you know, we agreed with the town staff and with the council and everybody else that it's not necessarily worth pursuing. The other thing that we did is came up with some scenarios. In many cases, these scenarios were not, none of these scenarios were exactly what most people wanted, but we thought that these scenarios were realistic and could probably happen, given the market. So we tried not to come up with ideal, pretty pictures, but what we thought was realistic. The first scenario is basically the current zoning. Okay, so you keep things the way it is, you're going to have, you know, kind of national brands probably, you're going to have kind of a car-oriented, you know, strip mall, it can be very high-quality, but it's not going to necessarily be a downtown. So that's one option that you can have. Most people didn't want that, but it's, you know, there's a sizable minority who did. But the kind of the plurality was, or I should say, the, yeah, so there is, there is a, there was actually kind of a half-and-half scenario, I apologize for that, that kind of was open to this. Scenario two was more of a commercial district, a little bit closer to kind of a Main Street district. We came up with the idea of a hotel, which that particular idea didn't necessarily go, people didn't necessarily go for. We also had the idea of building a library or civic center, not as much open space for this, kind of a little bit more intensity, a little bit closer to a downtown. And we see here that there was, you know, kind of a little bit of, again, people tended to lean towards supporting it. By the way, when a lot of people said, I would have supported this if it weren't for the hotel, was what we had. So we tried to put in the idea of a hotel, because we felt like it would accomplish a lot of what a residence would without being residential. And that may be something that could be more supported in the complementary area, perhaps. So this third scenario was, okay, town home-style residential to support the small businesses, landscape commercial boulevards, who are coming a little bit closer to a downtown. And there is some investment needed to program the open space, but again, this is mostly driven by the market. And, you know, we see over there that it's, again, about 50/50. So scenario two had a little bit more support in general, especially if you include the people who didn't want a hotel. And scenario four is, okay, this is going to be more of an economic driver, it's more commercial space, it's more active, there's a really well-programmed green space, but the town is going to need to be involved with that. And you see people lean toward disagree on that. So you see with all four of these scenarios, there's not one that's necessarily overwhelmingly supported or overwhelmingly not supported. It's a little bit of a mixture, but, you know, we have kind of a little more support around the second or third one, and you kind of see it laid out over here. You see the first scenario, people tended to either really like it or really hate it, as you can see, which is kind of the status quo. So you have a little more people said, no, we don't want the status quo at all, whereas a large minority said, yes, keep it, keep it the way it is. So we asked people, if it's only feasible with residential use, would you prefer not to be there to be a downtown? There was kind of a tilt toward disagreeing with that. If there's a variety of residential, there tended to be people who either strongly agreed or they tended to, you know, either agree or strongly agree, or strongly disagree. We asked people, okay, what if we have to reduce the standards? What if we say, okay, we're not, you know, we're going to have X, Y, Z, but we won't have the same quality? As we expected, everybody very strongly disagreed, or not everybody, but most people very strongly disagreed with that. National chain businesses, a little bit of a mixture. We talked to people, they said, what national chains? There may be national chains that we could support, but there may be others that we couldn't support. We said, are you open to the town paying for certain elements? There wasn't maybe as much opposition as we expected. Again, there was a certain percentage of people who strongly disagreed, but a lot of people who were open to it. And then we kind of came up with different scenarios for how much that people might be willing to spend on the downtown project. And as many people said, up to 10 million is zero. So that kind of shows you that people were pretty open. So the questions that kind of we, these are maybe questions that we can get into specifically, but I think that we're trying to plant the seed of asking, should a downtown still be pursued? How can you work toward the objectives within the political and economic realities? Do you want to leave room to grow? Special zoning overlay, whether that would be needed? How can there be a productive conversation about housing? That might be a question that might be its own session or multiple sessions. And how can other community amenities be introduced outside of the downtown conversation? So to kind of summarize what we heard, citizens are saying, we want boutique retail and restaurant establishments. We want spaces that can be used for recreation or entertainment, that's something that came up a lot. Connection of bike trails and pedestrian infrastructure, high standards of design and programming, generally not a high residential density, and having it to be a place where people of all ages can gather. It was very important for a lot of people that this really includes the community. Uses, there's a lot of different, you know, commercial uses, especially boutique commercial uses. There may need to be some strategies that are outside the scope of this vision that can attract and curate those types of businesses, which can be impossible to do. A lot of people said they want, you know, the potential rec center to be integrated or library, gathering spaces, potential future housing. Some people want to have potentially senior restricted housing, which could be possible, but it could also conflict perhaps with if with if you want this to be a very family friendly place or a place where there's activities or not, there could be a conflict there. And then pedestrian infrastructure and access to, to trails. So going through challenges real quickly. The developer always already has the right to build. That scenario one is already there. There's not a plan for people to react to yet. So we did go through these visions, but at some point there has to be something more solid. There's support for and against development here. It's going to be a challenge to create around the, the clock vibrancy and, you know, distinction between evening activities and nightlife. And, you know, in our view, it's residential is, is necessary to the vitality, or at least would be very helpful to the vitality. If there's a broad consensus against residential, that's certainly up to the citizens, but it is going to be harder to create a place without day and night vibrancy. There's people who want, who are talking about how the small town feel had initially attracted to the area. There's a lot of people who feel very strongly about that. There's also people who are very supportive of change, who want to keep both the older and younger generations in the community and want there to be more amenities that perhaps they don't have to leave town for. So in terms of recommendations, we would urge the city to create a special zoning district. We made some specific recommendations about that. Perhaps a form based code, which I can, can talk about in more depth. You know, changing the zoning in that way. Perhaps continuing with recreational center feasibility study. Perhaps interim programming for the space. So thinking of things like a farmer's market, of dining, of special events. There's a lot of different ways that in sort of a, an undeveloped space can be used in that way. And exploring creative housing solutions and, and kind of parks. So for the town, planned development, looking at that. Reaching out to the developers, obviously kind of a key now that there could be a little bit more kind of vision of what could be done. Finalizing the zoning changes. Again, temporary activation of property, we think would be a big thing. And just continuing to discuss the next steps with pub, with the public. I think it's been a very productive outreach with them. Even though some of the conversations were difficult and we didn't walk out with, with consensus. I think people recognize that the city, that the town was eager to get meaningful feedback from them. And I think a lot of people, even if they were opposed to some of the changes, appreciated the town sincerity through this process. So I think it can be a good discussion. So with that, I thank everybody for, for taking the time to listen to me and will be open to questions or comments.
Would you mind taking a seat and let me offer for public comments? Let me offer for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Nobody is coming forward from the chamber. Joseph, anyone raising their hands?
No one raising their hands.
No hands raised, so I go to the post the public comments. Charles can go back to the charts, it'll be the last recommendation before Charles.
Can you put that back up? Yeah. He's getting that pulled back up.
Yes, sir. Go to the last two charts for me. Last two, last two chart.
Last two.
Yeah, last two. They're going the wrong way.
He wants the last two slides.
That was the last two.
Not the last two charts, the last two slides.
Sixty, sixty one probably.
These are the last two.
There you go. So they're doing programming for the space. Is that, can I remember the discussion with you? Do you anticipate that can happen prior to zone? The comprehensive plan changing? Or you would do that, you would want to do the plan change before you start programming, entry programming?
So I've, I have worked on some projects, whether it's kind of in, you know, what we might call an infill or greenfield site or whether it's in a very developed place, where there has been some programming to test the nan places. So that could mean that there's markets. That could mean that there's movies, that could mean that there's concerts. That can kind of help to start to brand a place and build interest. As long as there is, and there, there, pardon, oh, thank you. And, you know, there, there may be certain regulatory things that need to be dealt with. But if there's consensus between, you know, if there's an agreement between the property owner and the town, there's no reason why that can't happen. So I'm working in the city of Portland, Texas, which is right across from Corpus Christi. There's a lot there that's about two and a half acres. And we've encouraged them, they're starting to have, you know, farmer's markets and Christmas events and things like that at that lot. That's, you know, I think that that's not mandatory, but it could be a way of building interest and attracting people into the space. So that was something that we wanted to at least be part of the conversation.
So that they can have a gradual process where people start coming to certain locations for a certain type of activities, kind of gain that interest and see whether this is a sustainable type of operation that sort of kind of built from there, right? Is that?
Yes, and you know, I, I mean, usually our, our firm's perspective tends to be that you, you don't necessarily want to wait until all the pieces are in place, because that can be a long, long wait. So, you know, if there were a chance, hey, there's an, you know, we know we want to have a public space here. There's an opportunity to build the states. There's an opportunity to have some public art. We came to some type of agreement with the developer and we can start doing things. It's, it's our perspective and our experience that, that, you know, sometimes you want to try to walk before you can run, essentially.
That makes sense. Council questions or discussions?
Mr. Finch? So maybe I missed this, but where is this downtown district we're talking about? Because I know we've talked about a couple of different places, but are we talking right across the street here?
It's right across the street.
You want to roll that chart?
There's a map.
I must have missed that somewhere because I know we've talked about several locations.
Yeah.
And then my question is, the next question would be if it's right here. We already have a developer.
Right there, I think.
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry. We already have developers working on a plan. So how would our new changes we make, I mean, we proposed it to do a district change or something like that. It seems like it's going to impact persons that are already working on a plan that we know about. And so would we need to go through all this if we already have somebody that's working in a direction that we kind of have already a vision? Because we know they've talked to several of us about it. And so I'm just wondering how we bring all this together with somebody, something that's already, there's already a sign out there that says, you know, things are coming. So I'm just wondering how this works together? How much more work do we need to do? How much more time do we need to spend on this? We already have a developer that's, that's hearing us and willing to work with us towards a common vision.
Yeah, becoming their vision versus our vision, but at a specific point.
Well, it could be, but it'd be hard for us. It seems like it'd be almost unfair for us to go in and try and change the zoning or make some kind of impact to some land that they're already, they already have a plan.
So, yeah, I'll address that. We, I mean, I think everyone was at some level aware that, that there was a developer interest in this site as well. At the same time, we didn't want the tail by the dog, per se. And so, you know, I think in, if the council is okay with the goals and the vision that, that had been established here, I think we would go back and, and, and work with that developer as they're bringing plans forward, as they're, you know, talking more specific about what those plans entail and make sure that what they are proposing is in keeping with the vision and the goals. And, you know, the report goes into some recommendations as far as what those requirements would be. I think the developer would be open to most of, of those requirements. You know, the developer has explored residential. And so exactly what that looks like, that would require a zoning change. But we would look to the guidance and the goals, which says that, you know, housing is kind of an, an option of last resort, but we're not closing the door to it. Would, you know, would help us in some of our conversations with the developer so that they don't spend a whole lot of time and money and get to the end of the process and then realize that we're not on the same page.
So what I hear you saying, Charles, is, and procedurally, maybe, Mr. Mayor, do we need to adopt this plan? Do we need to take some council action to adopt this plan? So they give staff clear direction? Or is the fact that we discussed that? I'm just wondering, for staff's sake, like he says, you know, we need to empower them so that they kind of know the next step. So do we need to, I mean, I'm just trying to guess out what our next step would be in this process?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I was going to say this for staff, my commander said the things. But for me, this is the first time I'm seeing it. I just don't know. I understood everything and I'm not too good at trying. There's so much information there, right? I would probably want to take a little time to look through it. Come back probably and get to it again with the staff and council, probably with the consultant. Take some time to think through it and ask those questions. And make that decision carefully and thoroughly. Proving that tonight is really, this might talk, but there are six more people here.
I actually wanted to add something. From what I was seeing, I didn't, I didn't see a clear direction that was given. I know that you said that in order for this to work, we're going to have to have residential. And in order for it to work, we're going to have to do this or that. But I mean, from everything that I'm seeing, there's really no consensus one way or the other as to what this should look like. I mean, we had someone come in here not too long ago talking about what we need to make retail more attractive. And I get what you're saying, in order for this to become more attractive, this is what it kind of has to look like, right? We have to have some of this, we have to have some of this and some of that. So was the direction that, hey, we want to make this thing more amenable. So in order for this to happen, you need to adopt these ideas. Because what I'm seeing as far as consensus from the town, I didn't see much of any of that as far as what the direction should be, what it should be. It looked to me like it was 50% yes, 50% no on most everything that came through. So for me to even say, hey, we need to go forward with a strategy, I didn't see a strategy that was, you know, that was agreed upon at all.
But the big picture, you're absolutely right. The big picture is, right? Well, that's what Charles said, if you do not have a vision and a, and a big picture plan, like what all that plan may be, then there's only one party who can drive the whole actions. Let's go to the developer, right? So I think, you know, the tail right, the dog right, tail right, that type of thing. So to your point, you're 100% right, the 170% to 180%, there is no consensus. But again, in my mind, we can't develop a plan. But that part I know is not why. But I think the consultant goes quite far in the vision at least. We know certain things are going to be sticky. Again, none of them are, they're easy pricing for us, right? First, let's just go there, it's going to be one. But we got to develop that part. If not tonight, we got to have that discussion here in the next, you know, near term, maybe long term, I think, have that part.
If I could just add to that, I mean, I think, yes, there's one developer that's looking at that more intensely orange area. And that is a developer that we have a history of successfully working with. But there are other owners of the other parcels that are in the complementary area. So I think that kind of speaks to what the mayor is saying about if we don't have a vision, it could be completely discordant. Where, you know, you would ideally like that whole area to kind of represent our downtown main street vision.
See here?
Mayor, I, I look at this as essentially, they've, they've done the marketing study for the town that, and I apologize, it's been a while back, but I, you know, we have a town center overlay for this area. And I think this area was what was focused on. So the surveys that we're taking were taken based on this. So now we have a marketing study for this area. Now, I said in the very beginning of this that the downtown vision committee has the whole town to look at. But we keep going back to this spot. And I realize that's a big net to take off, but you've got to, I, I think that has to be taken into consideration. I, I think in the end, this may be the right location because of highway eight. But again, this is the marketing study that we need. I think whether, you know, it gives us something and it gives town staff something to go and talk to the, to the developer back. Now granted, it's only if you total up all the numbers, you only got 300 and some odd people in total against it. Well, at the time, it was probably 6500 residents, 6000 residents. Now we're quite a bit more than that. And the work, don't, don't take me wrong here, the work was well worth it. It was, it was something that was needed. Because in the very end, you see so many different things that are diametrically opposed, that you end up with basically a 50 50 vote as to which one you want. I don't know if we've got any decisive answers here to, to be able to come to a collective decision. And particularly when you've got, I, I mean, in one way, in one respect, one or two property owners is a whole lot better than multiple property owners. But then in another respect, you're kind of stuck for, you know, it's a, it's, it's about negotiation. So I, I just wanted to say, this is our marketing study that's needed for that area. And at least it gives us something that we can go with them with and start having a discussion.
Charles, I thought there was a chart somewhere along in the packet. It shows we looked at different locations. And this was the strongly agreeing, you have the chart somewhere in the package.
So I, I can't remember if it's in the packet.
I believe so.
But we, we did look at.
I believe that chart was there. It shows this site is preferred or not or something. And there was one chart.
We, you may be thinking of the, we, we did something where we compared, where we had looked at certain downtowns and asked what they saw as being the ideal. We didn't have a question that asked about various locations. We did ask people informally about different places. And informally, we did come to a consensus around this location.
Did you say informally or formally?
Informally. I would, I would say that, that a lot of the, a lot of the questions that we asked were generally about what people wanted. So I would think that much of it would be very applicable, even if this doesn't turn out to be the location that, that ends up being ideal. I would also say that, first of all, I, you should be very pleased with, with the turnout for this for a town of this size. It's actually an exceptionally high turnout, even though it's a small percentage of the whole. But I would say that, that it's, it, my, my take was it was a little bit less than 50 50, that there was, you know, it was a little bit more people who supported the concept in general. But there were a lot of respondents, there was a large minority of respondents who felt very strongly in the opposite direction. So, you know, I do think that the, the fact that the vision, that almost everybody agreed on vision, that almost everybody agreed on goals, that there are certain things that there tended to be consensus around, at least for people who are probably supportive of the downtown, I do think gives you a start. But unfortunately, as I think a lot of people anticipated, we're not coming out with any, any, you know, strong unilateral consensus around, we want to have this, you know, this type of downtown in Sunnydale. But there's, there's a lot of interest, but not, not universal, certainly.
Mr. Adams?
So I think to Councilman Egan's point, we'd met for probably about three years. They all went back to what Tracy was here. There was a committee, expanded committees. We've had probably 15 to 18, maybe 20 different people on the committee over a period of three times, three years. Probably a minimum of 12, if not more than 18 meetings that we've had. Probably a minimum of 12, if not more than 18 meetings that we've had with community people to talk about this, as well as to see the vision and plan for the people that might be wanting to develop across the street. What we did see in those presentations, we definitely saw some things we don't like. And there's going to be some give and take, like I think Councilman Egan said. But we, we do have, I think we do have, and I think Kevin and I have the insight from being there, we do have a voice of what we don't want and what we might be able to agree upon. And if you see some of the plans we saw, there were things on there that we definitely don't want. So I think we do have something to work from. And maybe it is a marketing strategy. It probably requires more than tonight's time to talk about this. But there was, there was generally positive excitement about what could go there. It was just milked in with more, maybe more discussion of what was definitely wanted and unwanted. And ultimately, the council, when it comes up to rezoning, the people get to speak with it. But I was pleased with the people on the committee and their diverse thoughts. We had villagers on there, we had brokers on there, there were developers on there, there were town residents. So there was a wide, and they, and they had been here for a long time. So there was a wide variety of, well, we might consider that, and we might not consider that. The general consensus was tell everybody to protect our schools. And that's going to drive what the developers are going to bring us at some point. So I think there's value here. I would just spend some time in a work session at the mayor's direction or whatever to talk about this amongst ourselves with the staff. But I, I do think there's more value here than what we see in the numbers. We just have to break it down.
And some of the comments is leave it as green space offer. Well, that's nice, but unfortunately, we only own a small portion of the land. So that leaving it as open spaces, I don't think it's practical unless we want to go buy any property, right? So, so we got to take into account that opinion. While we respect that opinion, that may not be a practical approach for us. Ms. Egan?
I've got a question for you. The two and a half acre thing in Portland, was, was that purchased by the city? Or was that done through the property owner that you could do the farmer's market?
No, the property, the property owner has given permission to use.
Has given permission to use.
His property. In the case of Portland, Texas, we helped them to form a downtown, essentially association. And they, the, the property owner has a good relationship with them, so they are allowing him to.
So it kind of begins to provide that plant of that seed that begins to drive exactly what you're talking about.
Exactly. And one of the reasons why he was persuaded to do it is because this was, while they have a little bit of a grid, you know, in some businesses, there's not anything cohesive in the downtown. So he, you know, he was encouraged to do that so that you could start to brand what's called the Old Town District.
And what type of population base do you have in that area?
It's about the same as here, a little bit more.
And the reason I ask that question is we, we did have a very similar scenario come together about three or four years ago. And it lasted six months maybe. And it was at the major intersection of Town East and Beltline, or yeah, Town East and Beltline. This is a little bit more hidden away. It may be more conducive just because of the environment as opposed to what that was. It was actually a medical office development that they never built buildings on. They have not yet built the buildings on, they haven't been able to get anybody to do that. So you had concrete streets going in, it was somewhat limited parking. But it, it just, it didn't catch. And a lot of Sunnyvale people went there, got a lot of good traffic coming out of Mesquite and Garland, but it wasn't enough for the farmer's market to survive. So we're going to have a little bit more of a limitation to that over here. So it'd be interesting to hear, not necessarily now, but it'd be interesting to hear your thoughts on how, how do we, how do we stimulate that? Because to me, that's the most economical way to begin to, you know, it's just like the train stops back in the old days. The train stop was there and they needed water and it looks like, you know, you have Mesquite. So, you know, in Orlando or other places. So that's kind of what we're trying to talk about here in, in today's world.
Yeah, and I mean, we've, we've done that in a lot of different contexts. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of the, the idea is that the upside is that something is, is very, very successful. And the downside is you haven't wasted that much money, you know, on, on trying something. But I mean, we've, we've done, we did a successful event series in a, a random strip mall in, in Hurst, Texas. You know, so it, it can be done even in places that aren't necessarily super visible, but it requires, you know, some work to do that.
And it basically falls under the category, I would think, of with minimal improvements by, by the town and its public private partnership in terms of use of the land, so.
Can I make some comments? Mr. Park?
I want to thank you, Rick, for putting this together. I know this been, you know, we've worked on this for many years, I think, you know, three years or so. So there's been a lot of work. And I, I think the original plan was to create the vision. And I think it does show there's, there's not an extremely clear vision. But it does show, I think, just in our meetings, our discussions, I think it shows some of the things that we don't want, what we do, you know, that I think Sunnyvale would be comfortable with. And already, I think what the work that's been done, I think, does help any future developer or a current developer that may be looking at this type of thing. So already, I think there's going to be some guidance. I'd rather, I'd love continued discussions and see how we can push this forward. To Councilman Egan's point, we, we did look at some other areas. We actually, I think also, we're, we're focusing on maybe up by Kearney's, that corner. And already, there's been changes, you know, with, with pandemic, I think everything was slowed down. So this is, you know, it's just been delayed a lot. But already, there's been, you know, some very interesting developments up there. But maybe, you know, making that sort of a commercial center or downtown center. So, you know, it's, it's, I'm disappointed that this didn't give us a much clearer vision, but I think it actually does give us a lot. And I, I do, I do think this is still viable. And I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into this. So hopefully, we can continue this discussion and, you know, help create that vision for, for the town. There was definitely a lot of excitement. There's a lot of interest in this and in building something.
I think, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not surprised about this plate response. This is probably what I expect, nobody's going, this is, this is, this area people hold dear and near and a lot of different backgrounds, different experience, different downtown they're seeing. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the results we got. I think there's a vision. We got a really good starting point, in my opinion, at least now. Because some expert came and talked with a lot of people communicating and gave a thought, yeah, this is coming. I think we got to, I think there's a lot we can build from here. Two years back, we didn't have this one, right? We all had this downtown, but there's nothing, right? I think we are a whole lot closer to, again, I remember what you told me. This is a, a long-term process, right? So this is not going to be an overnight thing to get, you don't just build a downtown and it already come on. It's not that, that organic, maybe it's slightly accelerated, right? So that's why I kind of liked that last chart, I think somewhere it says, what do you call that? What did it say about farmer's market, that type of thing, kind of, starting Christmas plate and bringing people to events, that type of thing at all. They're really great, yes. Ms. Egan?
Mayor, just one real quick real, last question, hopefully. Was, we now own the real property that joins us to the east. Was there any discussion of that? Because we didn't own the real property at that time. It was kind of getting kicked around and talked about, and it has been for a number of years. But do you think the respondents would have, now that we own that property? Because I'm seeing Katy Trail concept, I mean, as a, as a possibility.
You're seeing what concept?
A Katy Trail concept. Because you've got all the way from, I wouldn't go all the way to Trip Road, but, you know, started about where the deeper orange for downtown development.
And I think we did know from much of it, because we, we shared that. And I think that's why you see the strong sentiment about pedestrian languages and pedestrian friendly. I was going to say, Mayor, if you would like us to get a work session on the books for you all scheduled, we can get that scheduled. And I would recommend though, that in between now and then, if you look at page 13 through six, through 15 of the report, not the PowerPoint, but the report, it specifically lists the recommendation of changes that would happen to the UDO. And so that way, you can get really familiar with the really down-and-terti specifics that we all might work towards that could be applied to this between now and the work session. And then we can discuss these in more detail then. Does that sound like a plan?
Ms. Adams?
Mayor, I think if we do the work session, we should have the people that were on the committee here as well. They'll talk through these things that they've already deciphered at some level.
That's a great idea.
We should invite public as well. So yeah, Susan and I agreed with that idea. So Charles, my, my thought, council, I'm going to throw it out to you. Now, October, November is here, December is here. So I'm thinking that we distribute this report, maybe sometime early January. We have a workshop with the, the committee members and some of the citizens to get some feedback. I don't know December, we won't, I really don't know how many people. That sounds reasonable to you, Susan?
Yeah, we can get something scheduled for you. And the timing would be good as you head into your strategic planning this one.
Exactly, exactly. Council, does that sound reasonable to you?
Sounds good, good plan.
I would recommend that you spend the PowerPoint out, is that available?
Yes.
Will that work for you, sir? Thank you, appreciate you coming here.
Thank you.
So I'll walk, and I think there's a lot of key word of this one. Our board of managers kind of picked them up, I appreciate you doing this one.
Thank you, I hope this ends up being helpful for the.
Yeah, I think it is really helpful, appreciate that.
Thank you, Rick. Also, one, one more point, you know, I think for the, the marketing vendor that came last session, it's two sessions ago, but part of my takeaway from that is that this is going to take a long time. You know, it's just, there's, we're not, I think, we're no way to rush here. So we can, we can go at a good pace and, you know, create a vision, create goals, but we don't have to rush this.
Yeah.
But I do think we need to be prepared so that when the developer comes, it could be more quickly than we realize that we have some major open one.
Yeah.
Charles, one thing, what is this, this area is currently zoned as?
So the, the, the box that's in that kind of deeper orange is this downtown development. Everything close to Collins is local retail and then it shifts to a single family too, which is one acre lots.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Okay, Charles, will you go for the next one, item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item is. Item number three, discuss, consider and act upon resolution 21-43. Authorize the town manager to execute an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the design of Collins Road. Improvements between Trip Road and Town East Boulevard. Mr. Jenkins, good evening, sir.
Good evening, please try this again. Apologies for that. Yes, sir, good evening. This resolution is to authorize the town manager to execute an advanced funding agreement with TechStop for the reconstruction, as you say, of Trip Road between, excuse me, the funding of North Collins Road between Trip Road and Town East Boulevard. As you know, this project has been in the works for some time. We had selected an engineering consultant to do design services for this project because we had been working on getting this agreement finalized with TechStop. We haven't moved forward with that agreement yet. But this would defray the costs of the engineering and design service. It wouldn't cover 100%, but it would certainly be a significant aid in that regard. That had been said, I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
Mr. Jenkins, will you take public comments, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Okay, let me ask for public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council on item number three, you may do so. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Nobody's coming forward from the chamber. Joseph, anyone raising their hands?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, why, going to post the public comments. Mr. Jenkins, if you don't mind coming back. Council, time for questions and discussions. So, so Charles, this is from Trip Road. That's around about, right? Around about two Town East Boulevard. That including the, the, do we still have the?
Yes.
Are you referring to the underpass?
Yes, that's still.
That is included in the scope, that's correct, yes, sir. It would be to serve the Sunnyvale ISD. The exact location hasn't been finalized, but it'll be somewhere around sort of the northwestern corner of that property. It'll have to be, the, excuse me, the location will have to be finalized just part of the design.
And the 1.2 million dollars series between this project and the Trip Road, that's the, from Bell Line to Fort?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, is that 50/50 or we can use any way we want?
For the Trip Road one, or are you talking about Collins?
The TechStop amount of Sunnyvale, a total of 1.2 million that will be split between this project and the reconstruction of Trip Road.
Right, so on this project, the amount that they have estimated is 562 dollars. 562,000 dollars, 450 is from the grant. And then 112,500 would be our match to that. But we know that the actual design cost are much more than that. We actually have 450,000 budgeted right now for that. And we'll still have a small gap that we'll bring back to determine the source of those funds. Most likely, it will come from impact fee funds.
So the 450 of the 1.2, 450 is for the 1.2?
Yes.
And the rest is for the Trip Road?
That's correct.
Okay, 450 plus, the lock will match, what roughly 25% of it, right, sounds like?
Correct.
Yeah, so the 112.5, okay, I got you. Council question from Mr. Jenkins.
Mayor, just a general question. Have we taken action to solidify that we want Collins to be a four-lane road from around about two, two Town East? I'm just, I'm trying to remember if we ever said officially, this is what we want. And we've talked about it.
Yeah, I've always been told that's what we want, so when we applied for the grant, that's what.
I know, that's why I'm just trying to make sure that, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, in our plan, talks about two-lane roads in our country deal. And then here we're talking about, there's been, I know there's a lot of debate before about making. I'm just asking the question, trying to figure out, did we actually say officially, this is what we want as a council?
Sir, if I may, chime in on that just a little bit. One thing I would bring to y'all's attention is, you know, we bring the recommendations of the town CIP committee before y'all on an annual basis. And that does include that section of Collins from Trip to Town East to be a four-lane divided roadway, similar to what is under construction currently. So that is in there as Collins Road phase two. I mean, it is in the committee, I don't know.
And it was adopted.
So by default, we adopted the CIP plan, so by default, we kind of said, we agree, and so we want this to be a four-lane road. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, I'm just saying, I'm trying to make sure, because there is a lot of debate about this. We've had a lot of debate in the past about it.
Ms. Egan?
If I could, when I was on PNC and Stony Creek was going through, there was a lot of discussion about whether or not it would be four-lane divided or not. We agreed to a plan with, with the development of Stony Creek at that time. That was four-lane, yeah, four-lane divided. There has also been discussion prior to, many of the people that are here on this council, and while I've been on council, about Collins Road being developed in that manner, as well as Town East as being four-lane divided. It's going to be a squeeze to get it to fit because there's some gas mains and water mains that, that end up causing some problems. But it can get very worked out. So whether or not it has been, I'm relative, I'm 95% confident that all that had been adopted with previous councils as to it being somewhat cash in concrete. That doesn't mean because it's, the concrete's not down yet, and that means it can be changed, but.
And I would say, you know, having looked, I mean, some of what you're referring to took place before I came on board, so I don't want to speak to that too much. I have looked at some of the plaster, some of those faces of Stony Creek that are on the west side of Collins. And right away was dedicated when those areas were plas-
And right away was dedicated, when those areas were platted, then the presumption would be that that was for a future one.
And it is, we just verified as well. It's shown on the thoroughfare plan, the master thoroughfare plan in the comp plan as that. And that's what I was whispering to him, is I, I was pretty confident, but we were both a little nervous to say it out loud till we could confirm. And we were able to confirm that it is in the master thoroughfare plan and the comp plan. And we, and we have two grants. We have this grant, plus we have an additional grant from the county that kicks in next year. That's $1,060,000 for construction towards this project. So we've been acting in accordance with the plan and the CIP plan with all of our actions.
I fully recognize, I probably missed it, that I just want to make sure that we.
And additionally, with, I mean, just as the commentary to that decision, with what is happening up at Barnes, Barnes Bridge and Collins, the flow of traffic that is going to be coming through that area in addition to what we already have and is already really congested, I think is really significant with the amount of, what is it, 2,500 homes that are going to go in at that intersection in an adjacent community, so.
Yeah, I mean, Susan, I hear what you're saying. I know that I travel Belt Line around 5:00, 5:30 every day. It's a three or four-lane road. It's backed up all the way, goodness, you know, to pass Barnes Bridge for sure. So just because you widen the road does not alleviate traffic. Actually, what it does is exactly the opposite. It actually brings more traffic to you. So basically, we would be alleviating the traffic basically from Barnes Bridge up to Town East. And then the rest of that traffic would come on our two-lane road, especially with the 2,500 homes. And I will tell you this, I know that this had been decided in our previous councils, because I've brought it up before, that I didn't think that it made a lot of sense to widen the road. But that was told to me that it had been approved on before. So I appreciate you bringing up, Mr. Fench, because at least give me my 30 seconds to give my two cents on this.
Okay, these are comments or questions. Mr. Jenkins, anything else?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Council, I think there's an action, so on this one.
Yes.
So can I have a motion with respect to item number three, please?
Mayor, seeing how this was previously approved on CIP under our watch, I'll make the motion to adopt this.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve item number three as presented. Mr. Second. Second. Second by average. All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed seven. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Moving on to item number four, discuss, consider and act upon resolution 21-44, authorizing the town manager to execute an advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Tripp Road from the Falls Drive to Bell Line. Believing so, one more time?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you. Yes, this resolution is to cover the balance of the funds, as Susan mentioned a few moments ago, that we obtained from Tech Stop. A section of Tripp Road between the Falls and Bell Line has been previously identified as part of the pneumatic process that the town went through some time back. It was identified as to be replaced with exist, replaced with an asphalt section, similar to what's out there now. But we would remove the old pavement, we would stabilize and subgrade, and then, you know, put new asphalt pavement back on top of it. Again, that's been previously shared with y'all as part of the pneumatic process. What I would say that this project will still need to be bid out. This funding will, well, we don't know, we'll have to bid it out to see what the final cost is. But this obviously will significantly defray the construction costs of that roadway reconstruction. Again, that had been said, I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Jenkins, will you take public comments? This is a public comment section of the agenda. At this time, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number four, you may do so. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Nobody's coming forward from the chamber. Joseph, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, we're going to close the public comments. Mr. Jenkins. Council, any question for staff? Happy readers, it's a phenomenal job, don't ask questions. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. If there are no questions, call for a motion, item number four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number four as presented.
Also made by Mr. Freeman, second by Allen to approve item number four as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed seven.
And Mayor, if I could just, I really wanted to compliment staff on this. I mean, this is $1.2 million of money that's free to our community that isn't going towards our tax burden, you know, as a team effort to apply for these grants. So really want to compliment staff on going after those funds because it's a lot of work to put in these grant applications. And, you know, they take it upon themselves to do that, so.
Yeah, that's absolutely well stated. You know, we, we got this grant, and we got the additional grants for different things. And I know that many people who work hard behind it. Definitely appreciate, this is really great deal. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, staff. All hard work.
Okay, moving to item number five, mayor and council members for staff, future staff of baseball and directors. Okay, if there are none, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Allen to adjourn, all in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion passed seven. Time is 8:17. And the meeting's adjourned, staff, thank you very much. Council, appreciate y'all.